Everyone, it's Monday, June nineteenth at seven AM. This is a regular meeting of the Oaks Public School Board. We're meeting at in the Oaks Public Schools Central Office Conference Room and also via Zoom. Board members present in the room are Sheila Nagel, Rhonda Day, and Sonya Neal. Robert Thorpe is joining remotely, and Monica Heimbug is absent this morning. So we'll, I'll call the meeting to order, and we will stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. The first, next item on the agenda is the confirmation and the approval of the agenda. I have no items to add or change in the agenda. Do you have anything?
Yes, I received one of teachers' contracts over the weekends that would need to be approved, and everybody should have a paper copy.
And that is on the agenda, contract approval, C business.
Oh, there is.
I think we added it in anticipation.
Okay.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve? Day moves to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Nagel, second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes. Welcome, all visitors. We have Dave Erlin, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Dobitz, and Brian Sayer here with us in the room. And we have Mrs. Maroti, Mrs. Lynch, and John Powers. And Anna Sel is joining us remotely from Madora. So welcome. It's early in the morning out there, isn't it? Okay, welcome, everyone. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. The items were in your packet of the approval of the June seventh meeting minutes, the review of the bills, the May financial report, and then Shannon Santos, a business manager's report separately, and all four of those items are on the consent agenda. The appropriate motion for approval would be I move to approve items A through C and accept item D on the consent agenda. Make the motion. Sheila Nagel moves the approval and acceptance of the items on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Day's second. Is there any discussion? And just for clarification, the board received all of these items last week or over the weekend, and should have had an opportunity to review and question. There are any questions? The bills and financial reports were quite extensive, so if there was anything that needs any discussion or clarification?
I would just like to add to my business reports that I had reached out when we had gotten the news about Ushler, and reached out to Autotel Power about any rebates available. And they're really, they were just gonna kind of think about it or talk about it and find out what they could do, because we didn't, at that time, didn't really know what we had or what, what was the cost, where, direction we're gonna go. So Jeff Haas had showed up, or called and showed up on Thursday, and they had they had talked about a rebate. There is rebates available for a geothermal system. And so I said, well, we're still in the planning stages, but they're, they have a process that if we were to commit to a geothermal system, they have some tests that they hire individuals to decide how big of a unit and other items, and then the rebates are kind of contingent on that. But I, I said, well, okay, we know that they're available, but at this point, we didn't, can't commit to anything. So that is out there, but I neglected to put that on the report.
Thank you. Any other questions or clarifications requested? If not, regarding the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes, and the consent agenda is accepted and approved. Moving on then to our regular business meeting, committee meeting, and reports facilities. We will have now the second phase of our ICS presentation. And so for that, I will turn it over to Mr. John Powers.
People own Oaks, North Dakota. Sitting here on the shores of Lake Superior, so it's a long stretch from the Big Lake to the prairie. Appreciate, I, I thought Lori was gonna be on first to give a quick little introduction, so I will give an introduction to myself. I've been in the land use planning business for fifty years. I'm in my quasi-retirement, and all I do now is school enrollment projections. I've been doing that for the last fifteen years, fifteen, twenty years. Most of the work's been in Minnesota, but I have done extensive work in both Dakotas, including North Dakota, obviously, up and down, up in the valleys where I started, up in Grafton in that area, but I've worked all over. Most of it's in rural areas, smaller towns, smaller districts, some that are purely ag-like yours, others that are mixed. And I bring to my projections, not just demographics, but I bring to it a a land use and community development perspective. That's what the bulk of my career has been. And as a result, I try to understand the community and the school district at the same time. We get a sense of where you've been, why you've been, and where, what are the dynamics that are likely to impact your future enrollment? So it's not just looking at your school case, it's not just looking at numbers. I try to understand the community as well, especially again. And obviously, some of yous up from the lakes and pines of northeastern Minnesota, it's always, I have to take extra effort to understand areas that like yours, which are out there in the ag area. And I think I do a fairly decent job understanding the communities, and hopefully that's reflected in the projection. So you want me to share the screen? Is that, that's the, do you want me to do?
Yeah, so, do you know how to do that, John?
No. I, let's see what happens. Are you seeing that?
Yeah, yes.
Good to go.
All right, good to go, I think. So this projection was done, I am, I'm a self-employed contractor, but I have a contract with ICS, and I've been working with them now exclusively for the last five years doing my projection work. So where they have projects, that's where I have a project. So in this case, they're working with you, and they plugged me in to do the enrollment projection part. So that's the relationship between ICS and myself. I've been working with the principals of ICS in various forms of their company for almost twenty years, so it's been a long-term relationship. Make sure. Okay. This is the quick overview of the information as I, as I brought it into the analysis. So I looked at, first of all, your current K-12 enrollment, and I saw where the last ten years, it's been, it's gone up and down, but it's been pretty much, you'd almost wanna say static. There was no overall definitive trend up or down. The number of kids living within the district, regardless of where they went to school, most of your kids who live in your district go to your, your school, by the way. Open enrollment's a minor issue for you. It hasn't changed either. Very few kids open enroll out of your district. And I've worked with districts where sometimes thirty-five, forty percent of the kids open enroll out, or to the equivalent number move into your district. So open enrollment here is a non-issue, which, which from your perspective is a positive, because it shows that there's satisfaction with your district. The number, there are no private schools that impact you. There is homeschooling, and, and those numbers did rise and had an impact on your enrollment, but that seems to have now stabilized over the last three years. And so that dynamic has, from my perspective, flattened out. So, but despite all this stability, and this was something that Anna and I talked about when I first started on the project, I said, no, everything's static, status, it's, it's, and then I started looking at some of the analysis, though, putting out, and I'm starting to see some little dynamic, the dynamics that are suggesting that there's going to be a downward trend in numbers. And we'll go through, that's the key part of the projection. As you know, populations in Dickey County have modestly but steadily declined, and are projected to do so. And I realize your district covers four counties, but the vast majority of your district population is in Dickey County, so I focus on that county for my analysis. The number of, and you'll see a graph later on, the number of county births before 2011 was about seventy year, you know, up and down, up and down, we had averaged seventy year. And then there was really a weird year with the county had just this abnormally low number of births. But after that, since then, the average has been about sixty-four. It's, it's like the county just kind of downshifted one gear and went from an average of seventy down to sixty-four. Doesn't sound like a big number, but that's ten percent. And as a consequence, that's gonna have impact as we go forward. Your area in particular, and Anna is an example of it, benefited from something that a researcher in Minnesota came up with called the Rural Brain Gain, something that he identified, starting in two thousand, maybe even a little bit further back than that, where people who had grown up in a small rural community, went to college someplace else, got their first job in a larger community, but when they had kids, moved back to their hometown. That's where they wanted to raise their family. And it clearly happened in Oaks. And that's was tremendously to your benefit, and that's what really has driven the last ten years of your enrollment pattern. However, the, the dark cloud in that whole thing, as, as positive you are as, as an attraction, the lack of affordable housing and the absence of any new housing projects on the horizon are gonna constrain population growth, and we'll get to that. So as a consequence of these factors that I'm playing through, I see that your K-12 enrollment is going to decrease somewhere around thirteen percent by ten years out. That's the overview. Now we'll go into some of the details. And I realize it's difficult to ask questions in Zoom calls, but if necessary, just butt in, we'll deal with it. Don't, don't feel like this is a, that I can't stop and talk about things that come along. So factors that I consider in an enrollment projection, I look at the enrollment patterns within the community itself, obviously, within the district. I look at what's going on around you the best that I can. This includes their enrollment levels and the open enrollment exchanges that with you that are critical. I look at any development initiatives that will, that are in or would impact the district. And those can go either way, something that's new coming to town or something that's there that's leaving, not having impact. And then I look at the patterns of births relative to your kindergarten classes and how they have been in the past, and use that as the basis for looking forward, because estimating kindergarten classes is one of the trickiest elements of a projection. This is your historic information for the last ten years by grade. If you go down to the, to the reddish pink zone at the bottom, you can see that your total K-12 enrollment, and by the way, I focus on K-12 because pre-K is generally not mandatory, and it's a lot of fluidity there. So I strictly look at K-12 numbers. So your K-12 was just under five hundred, and it's, it was at five hundred, up or down, up or down, up or down, until this year. This year was a low year, but it seemed to be a low year in the pattern of up, down, up, down, up, down. And so I wasn't, between two end-to-end numbers, twenty thirteen, fourteen compared to twenty-two, twenty-three, there's this huge drop off. If you put it in the context of averaging over the time, you realize that, okay, this has been basically a static situation. Your K-six numbers went up and then come back down, as you had a big year, some big classes come through. Your subgrade seven, twelve have actually been increasing, and part of that is had, had some impacts from open enrollment. Graphically, this shows your historic enrollment. The blue line is your total enrollment. You can see pretty much flatland across right around five hundred. The red line is the resident students, students who live in your district, who attend your district. And the bulk of your enrollment are resident kids. You do get some non-resident students open enrolling in. It was minimal back in the day and has essentially broad grouped over that time period. So now you're averaging thirty, and that's been fairly stagnant. Once you got up into the mid twenties, close to thirty, it's been pretty much that figure throughout, throughout. So that's been the, the pattern. So as, as your resident enrollment started to drop a little bit, it was being backfilled a bit by increases in open enrollment, and that's been a helpful pattern. I look at average grade size by grade groups as an initial indicator of what might be some dynamics in play. So the red line is the average K-six class, green is the average seven, twelve. If you look at K-six, you can see it was starting around forty. Up, down, it was, it was forty. And that has, in the last couple of years, dropped forty. Not a big number, but a number, and that's, you know, one, two kids, three kids on average. And all of a sudden, you do that over ten years, and you've lost twenty or thirty kids, and that's a dynamic that's starting to come in play. And the bulk of those, by the way, have been in your resident kids. Your grade seven, twelve, on the hand, has been fairly static all the way through. It's, it was that one number that had moved a bit, because it was getting the impact of those higher K-six grades are starting to move in, and that has an impact as, as, as they move up and through the grades. And they even know what's going to happen as you go forward, because you can see the smaller input grades coming in. Plus, you have a, a particular dynamic in your district that I looked at. Anna and I talked about it, in that you have a tendency to lose students in a, in a particular class cohort as they move up through the grades. You tend to lose those kids over time. So you have fewer kids in grade twelve than you had when those kids started back in kindergarten. That's been a pattern that the district has seen for a number of years.
John, I have a question.
By the way.
Is that common in your research, that classes lose throughout their time till graduation?
Obviously, most school districts lose kids in the upper grades, ten, eleven, twelve, eleven, twelve in particular. Early graduation, dropouts, any number of decisions at that point. Your, in your case, it's a little more pronounced. It's, it's just was a consistent dripping, so we say. And that's an indicator that, that some, that's some mechanisms in play that's, that households with kids are leaving as they age, and you can't put in, it's not easy always to put a hard reason for that. Now, one of the things that I looked at, and Anna and I had a conversation about this, is that your homeschool numbers jumped up, and those were resident kids that effectively pulled out of your district, out of your enrollment, and impacted those cohorts as they moved through, because all of a sudden, one or two kids opted for homeschooling, and they stayed there. And that, and I, and I took that into consideration. So I effectively added all your homeschool kids back into your enrollment, just to pretend they're all one big happy school again. And you still lost kids. The combined, the combination of the two still had a cohort loss over time. And that told me that, okay, there is something here where you are slowly losing kids as they age. Is it a case of elementary, it's fine, when you get to high school, the household says, well, we're gonna go to pick the town that's seventy, eighty, a hundred miles away, in a direction that may offer more options. Maybe it's a job situation. It could be a combination. They're not open enrollment out, because your open enrollment numbers, they're nonexistent. That's not an issue for you. So these are absolute losses from the community out to someplace else, and beyond that, I can't tell you. In Minnesota, I will see drop off in the upper grades due to various college course options, PSEO it's known as. Can take a number of kids, anywhere from five to ten seniors a year. Oh, they're still in the school, but they're taking college credits, and they don't show up as, as enrolled students as much. I'm not a factor here in, in, in your area. So yeah, your situation is, is normal, but a little bit elevated. How's that for an answer?
Well, thank you. That is something that I, I have personally noticed and have wondered about, and, you know, it might only be one or two kids a class, but they're all kids that, I, I mean, I, I think we're small enough that we can, we can look into each one of those and, and e-either, either figure it out or ask some questions to figure out what's going on.
The, the thing is, I can tell, I mean, the one thing you can't know is that it's not a competitive thing with the adjoining school districts. They're not open enrolling out. They're not going to a private school. There isn't one. They're not going anymore to homeschooling. They're leaving the area. So it's a, it's, it's not a school district issue so much as it is probably a, a household situation. That combines maybe schooling, but also maybe where jobs are, whatever. That's it's the only, only spin I can put on it.
Thank you.
This graph shows what I call your, your K-12 resident students who are enrolled versus those who live in the district. And it's not a bigger issue here, because your open enrollment situation is really minor, but the, I look at what I call the resident students living in a district called the resident pool of K-12 students. It's, it's the, it's the dynamic that says, okay, these kids live here. What happens to them? Do they go to us, or do they go someplace else? And has this changed over time? Because this one really relates to population, and as much as it tries to get to that, as well as, as enrollment decisions. So ten years ago, you had just under five hundred kids living in the district. You got almost all, ninety-nine percent of them enrolled at Oaks. This, over time, that gap has opened up a little bit. The number of kids living in the district, as we've talked about, has been very static, and it's been a slight drop off in those enrolled, down to ninety-four percent. And it's all due to homeschooling. So you look at the, the table here, the numbers up above in the green is the total number of kids living in the district, K-12. The second line down are the number that are enrolled at your district, open enrolled out, essentially nonexistent, one-family decisions, maybe two families have most decisions in an odd year. You, you just don't lose any kids. Private, there is nobody that, that impacts your district. Homeschooling is the only other wild card factor, and you can see where it started in the single digits and then moved up. Pre-pandemic, which is kind of interesting. You know, most districts, they'll have a, a dynamic going on, and then the pandemic hit, and people made decisions from either side of the spectrum, you know, pro-mask, anti-mask, school stay, open school close, whatever it is, people opted to leave. But yours started a little bit sooner than that. So there was a little, some families were making decisions earlier, a little bit earlier on. They wanted to homeschool their kids. That number got up to around just under thirty, and for the last three years, it has stayed there. And been no drop off since the pandemic, by the way. So to me, it's, it's more of an underlying desire to be homeschooled. My gut would tell me that it's generally a religion, a religious-based decision by families. That's, that's the biggest case. But it can be any number of factors, but it seems to have stabilized. But it has been the one thing that's pulled kids out of your, in districts. So now that just under roughly six percent of your kids living in your district are homeschooled, open enrolled out is negligible, and everybody else comes to your district. When I looked at open enrollment, this is, this is a, a graph that most districts would die to have. The blue line are the kids coming in. The red line is the kids going out. The dotted line, black, is your net, and your in and your net are almost identical. That's a good number. You just don't lose anybody. And the number of kids coming in, even though this line moves around, is relatively static, although there is a perceptible upward tilt to, which is, which is good. These are the districts that you have open enrollment exchanges with. And the only one of, the only two of any consequence are Ellendale and Lemoore. You do, you don't send anybody out. It's who comes. Ellendale, as you can see, three, three year, the last three years, it's been, you sent, they brought in twelve kids, you've netted eleven. Four, five, six years ago, they were sending twelve. Seven, eight, nine years ago, they were sending twelve. Static situation. Almost all of these are static. Driven probably a little bit by where the kids happen to live in a district relative to where the schools are, more likely where their parents work. And they feel more comfortable sending their, their kids to a school close to where they work. Or, and this could be the case too, is that a family lives in Ellendale, but one or both their parents had gone to Oaks, and they wanna send the kids back to where they went to school. And that happens quite frequently. The fact that this is relatively static tells me that there's no major trends either way that's going to disrupt this relationship. And I'm not anticipating, unless something really happens. It could be a one-off situation, so that happens sometimes. A new principal comes in. It's either more strict or less strict. Parents don't like it, kids don't like it, boom, they opt out, and then things settle down four, five years later. But I don't, those you can't predict. But your situation pretty static, and in your favor. This just shows where they're coming from. The blue line is Ellendale, you know, basically twelve kids. Lemoore drops, come back up. Sergeant Central has been, was negligible, and now has been averaging closer to, you know, five, six, seven kids now. So that's been the major uptick, actually, Sergeant Central, North Sergeant Lisbon, you know, two kids. I mean, one kid. We're just not talking serious numbers here, except inbound. I don't know what the student aid is, situation is in North Dakota, but every kid's, is money, and so it's to your benefit. Kind of a nerdy part of the projection is looking at grade progression ratios. It's the real math that drives the projection, actually. And it's basically measuring how many kids move from grade, one grade to the next level in a year, and that creates a ratio. If you had ten kids in grade one, and you had ten kids in grades, in second grade the next year, that's a ratio of one, no loss, no gain. Anything under one means you lose kids. Anything over one means you gain kids. And as I looked at this one, I had to discount that uptick in homeschool numbers. I had to, that happened. It would impact these ratios, because these ratios are all averages of, of, when, when on the last ten years. And so I, I, I basically, I think, neutralized that impact as we went forward. So you're still gonna be losing cohort kids, but not at, not to the level of us being impacted by the, by the, the homeschool numbers. So that's the, the adjustments that I made in here. Basically, you hold kids, but you can see those negative numbers, point nine nine, point nine eight. Sometimes that doesn't even generate a kid, given small numbers, but it means basically a little nickel and diming here and there as they get multiplied through a ten-year projection. Now, these are your resident students. For your non-resident students, the numbers were so small in any given grade. We're talking single digits, that I just put a value of one. For your non-resident students, the numbers were so small in any given grade, we're talking single digits, that I just put a value of one. Uh, you don't gain, you don't lose, it's a neutralizing uh factor. You tend to get kids when they open enroll to you and they stare. Um, and so uh you have some variations going on um at uh at at certain splits, but um because the numbers are so small, I just made them one. Then, one of the things I look at is what's going on around you. Cause you're, it's not just Oaks, it's the greater environment that's helping to drive project of enrollment, you know, what's happening with population. So Lisbon is the largest district. It lost enrollment and then picked back up a little bit the last couple of years. So they basically are from point, endpoints are basically unchanged. Uh, you're the second largest district, you can see basically around five hundred, there will drop off this year. Ellendale has dropped, plateaued, dropped again, it's probably plateauing. You know, it's only a two percent loss over time, but you can see how they have varied. Lemoore, on the other hand, um, they they have a twenty percent drop in enrollment and it seems to be, you know, that's a fairly steady line. Flat for a while and then dropped again dramatically. North Sergeant also has been coming down, um, not dramatically at first, but maybe the last couple of years. Um, so I mean, they're almost between a fifth and a fourth and a fifth, their enrollment down for ten years. Sergeant Central dropped and basically it's kind of um plateauing, um, so. They're not looking too bad, in fact, they've actually grown, like you have grown the last couple of years versus the the middle years, so. Some positive things happening both their district and your district. Um, here's my assessment of historic enrollment as I as I looked at. Your total enrollment and the number of kids living in the district varied within a range, but there's no definite up or downtrend. Um, the persistent pattern of class cohorts losing students as they move up through grades was was obvious. Open enrollment gains have been consistent with nearly almost no losses. Your losses to homeschooling uh are likely permanent uh at at the higher level somewhere around the high twenties, thirty. Um, unlikely to rise in the future, as anything can happen, of course, but it doesn't seem to be a factor at play. Interesting one is the average births in Dickey County have shifted downward from seventy to sixty-four per year, so that that downshift, it's not a downward trend, it's just a literally a downshift and there's a graphic, you'll see that on. The average number of resident kindergartners, not not the kids homes, uh open rolling in, but just the resident kids has declined from an average of forty-one to an average of thirty-four, and that's a significant number. So you were averaging, you know, getting forty kids, one, you know, one or two up above or below that number. Uh, ten, you know, seventy, nine, ten years ago, the last four or five years, you've been averaging thirty-four. Um, that's a a portend of what, of a mechanism in play. As a consequence, your average K six class size has declined, while the average seven twelve has increased, but this increase in response to initially goes larger lower grade sizes coming through, so uh they, this is a delay factor. One of the key things in a forecast direction is to try to estimate future births of kindergarten, kindergarteners, it's always a mix of analysis and and guesswork, educated guesswork. I look at population, I look at births, I look at the number of women between ages of fifteen and forty-four, I look in estimates and projections from various entities. Um, and then um pick generally a conservative value to go for. So what do we have? Uh, not new to you people, you live there. Uh, you, your district covers four counties. Over ninety percent lives in Dickey County, two-thirds live in Oaks. But so the population in Dickey County has declined consistently from, you know, two thousand, two thousand ten again to twenty twenty, is projected to drop again by twenty thirty. The census estimated number of people living within your school district um has shown a decline of over six percent um from twenty-nine hundred in two thousand to uh two thousand seven, say fifty in twenty twenty. Um, not a big number, but it's a trend down. Excuse the the small type here, but I was trying to put a lot of information on one page. One of the things I look at then is what's happening in the community that would impact population, particularly school-aged kids. What's happening in the economy, what's happening with residential development? Long story short, Oaks is an attractive community, it has been rated as one of the nicest little places to live in North Dakota. Funny, my neighbor next door to me, uh, her son lives in Fargo, and I mentioned where I was doing a project, and he said, oh, I hunt ducks down in Oaks, I love it down there. Small world. And but you're, you're a place that has attracted people and you, and people have moved back to your community. Especially between two thousand and two thousand fifteen. Um, it was the twenty-somethings with kids moving back, you benefited from that. Your egg sector is dominant and seems to be doing well, uh, some non-egg businesses that are also doing well. You have good internet connectivity, which allows people to to work remotely or for businesses to set up shop in a small town where they want to raise their kids. Your city infrastructure is good and it has capacity for more development. But you may have some constraints that are financial. Like you, small town, limited resources, and you have a road project that might absorb some of your financial capacity in short term. Affordable housing, like every other place in this country, especially rural areas, short supply. It limits business expansion, um, which then limits the ability to attract new new residents. There are some empty lots available for infill housing, but that'd be onesies and twosies at best. There's some vacant homes that can be rehabbed or replaced with new construction. But basically, there's no room or plans in the immediate near term for uh housing at a scale that would impact population in uh dramatically. And that's could be housing at this first older citizens. You vacate and and move into a into a downsized situation and and open up their house, or housing strictly for new workers coming to town. And so my perception is that the dynamic that brought Oaks to the situation where you're at today has slowly changed. People have come back, there's no room for more people to come back, there's no place for new workers until you get more housing, and that's the issue for every small town. Um, and so what's going to allow your population to change over time is for people my age and older to either depart the earth or move to a, to an appropriate senior citizen type of housing, either in town or in some other community and free up those three and four bedroom homes uh for working class households with kids. But that's a slow process. Uh, and I think that's absent any new development, that is the process moving forward in Oaks for the foreseeable future. Now, we look at births, um and these are births just to Dickey County residents only, because the ninety-four percent of your population lives there. And you look at that, that weird twenty-twelve year, twenty-six births, I mean. But prior to that, you were, the county was averaging seventy births a year. After that, it's averaging sixty-four, it's just like it just downshifted one year. Um, there's no trend. From twenty-twelve forward, there's no trend line, it's basically up and down, it's, and it was small population, you're gonna see big spikes like that, just given this, the size, you know, two births, five births is a significant jump up or down. But it's been fairly stable, um, but down from that prior level. And so the projection that I'm using um keeps it in those low to mid-sixteen range on average. Now, I got a flat line basically going across, it's gonna jump up and down like it has in the past any given year. But on average, this is how I see the births going forward. And that impacts, and of course, your kindergarten classes. Um, so the assumption I have for the, that I put in for the projection is that there's no new housing development that's gonna impact the population dramatically. Uh, the number of births are gonna stay in the mid-sixties with some fluctuations, but somewhere in that area of the mid-sixties. And you're slightly over half of those births will likely be to residents living within the Oak School District, and that's been the average of the last couple of years, and I went forward with that. Um, your open enrollment dynamics are gonna remain similar, minimal losses and a consistent non-resident numbers in the low thirties. You gotta remember, those other school districts generally are losing kids or being stable with their enrollment, so. If they were dramatically increasing in enrollment, for instance, and more kids were living there, your numbers might come up, you're just getting the same percentage but of a larger pool, but it seems to be static to declining, so I kept it at thirty. I kept the homeschool numbers um around thirty. And uh I I, what I did is I added, I had these kids in a kid, as kindergarten aged kids, so I deduct homeschooled kids, and then they just, I looked at these grade progression ratios to make sure we were not increasing the number, just held them as they went through. And you saw the grade progression ratios. Is there a question?
Well, I, oh, but I forgot I have a school board meeting, so I dropped that note on my phone.
Go ahead, John. Okay, um, yeah, these calls are always get get weird. And then the great progression ratios, I kept it, as you, as I said before, you're still gonna lose kids, but I modified it so that we took out the impact of the of the uh historic losses to homeschooling. And that gives us this. Um, you're around four hundred and seventy-nine, four hundred and eighty kids, let's say, this past school year. Total K twelve, um, that's gonna drop to around four eighteen, somewhere, you know, let's, let's call it four, four twenty, somewhere around there. Your K six numbers starting in the mid-two forties are going to fluctuate. They're gonna go down and then they'll start coming up a little bit, because that's the way the births will be working over time. And you have incoming, the first five years of the projection are impacted by births that have already occurred. And then the last five years are impacted by projected births. And that's where those, that average flow of births coming in will probably slightly bring your K six up. Your seven twelve is gonna be where you're gonna see most of your decline, and it could be significant. Just as these smaller classes um generally start sliding through. Um, in any given year, you're gonna have a class that's maybe abnormally large or abnormally small, which will move these around a little bit. But the trend line is, is that your seven twelve is going to um drop below two hundred. And this shows in graphically. Um, blue line is total enroll enrollment, red is resident, green is your non-resident open enrolled in. Um, you can see that your resident enrollment's been start close to four fifty, it's gonna go to under four hundred. Non-resident, it's held pretty consistently in the mid-thirties. Any given year is gonna move around. So that's how I see that, this puts it into his, into a historic perspective, the solid lines are your historic enrollment for the last ten years, the dotted lines are your projected, so the blue is your projected total, the red is your projected resident and the green dotted is your projected uh non-resident. So you can see how you've come down from that five hundred plateau to where now you're gonna be um in the lower, lower quadrants of the four hundred range for your enrollment. Your average grade size by grade group is um the red line is K six, as you can see, that's gonna be fairly static, it comes down a little bit in the middle part of the projection, then comes back up. The green is your average seven twelve, it's going to could start dropping, uh, cause it's getting smaller inputs now, and it has been, and so that'll start to keep feeding into it. Ten years out, that green line will start reboning up a little bit, because there'll be that steady flow of of slightly larger K six coming in, but this gives you the pattern that your K sixes are gonna be fairly static in the mid-thirties, mid to low thirties, and your seven twelve is gonna start around forty, and it's gonna drop um into the lower thirty on average. Using the projection, I I tell people this is not a prediction, it's built on assumptions, best understand dynamics and how we see things playing through. It generates smooth lines and perfect looking numbers, but in reality, there's gonna be a lot of fluctuation, you just cannot predict, especially in a district like this where three, four, five kids can really impact any given year. Um, basically, I I tell districts, look at this, look at the projection, see what happens year to year. Do a quick little deviation analysis from what I'm projecting to what's actually happening. And try to understand what caused the deviation and um, and if it, if it's significant, you can start seeing, well, we, an assumption that we we laid out isn't proving to be true, we have a new world here, a new normal that's happening in the district, let's plan accordingly. Or you go to the deviation and say, it was a one-off? Keep running with the projection, it's looking pretty good. But that gives you the ability to make those evaluations and and analyses over time. Highlights. Uh, you you do have a solid economy and it's an attractive place to live, the problem is, there's not enough places for more people to live. Um, so your future enrollment's gonna be um going down, it's driven by a lower number of births in the county. A persistent decline in cohort class sizes and a lack of housing. Total K twelve is expected to drop thirteen percent. And we've already talked about your grade six, so, uh, average grade sizes. Um, so with the Q and A part. That's a lot of information and there's a background paper that goes with it, provides you with more information. And so if you don't have questions today, you have questions in the in the near future. Um, have, give them to Anna and send them on to me and I'll gladly respond. But anything today?
I have another question, John. Um, I'm looking at your slide that shows the enrollment uh in all the adjoining, in Oaks and adjoining districts. And one of the ones that appears to have the greatest decline is North Sergeant. And yet um, when I drive through winter where North Sergeant is located, I see they have had significant addition of housing in the last ten years. What other back, and I know you didn't analyze them, but in your experience, what factors might affect uh a, an enrollment decline even while housing may have been increasing?
Well, um. Yeah, I did study them, I don't, um. And I, there, there's a million reasons, um, so I can be pretty wishy-washy here. One is, what's the type of housing being built? Is it for seniors? Okay, um, and if that's the case, not gonna increase your student population immediately, but it will over time a little bit, because their houses will empty out and and they'll be backfilled by younger households. Not every younger household has kids. Not every younger household may have kids, but they may still be one and two or three years old, they just haven't gotten into school yet. And they just haven't got that founding formation stage. And some of the households coming in into those units might be in uh either early retirement or late, late workforce, they might be in the, let's say they're forty, forty-five, kids have already left home. And they're just moving there because there's a job opportunity, there's the house and they're there. Um, so new housing in and of itself doesn't generate, necessarily generate students. But it does provide the opportunity for households with kids in a community, so um uh, North Sergeant may be hurting right now, but maybe five years from now, depending on who moves into those housing units, they could, they could flatten out, I couldn't tell you, but that, there's so many different things that play. That uh, that could be one of them. And for, and they may lose kids to open enrollment to other districts, uh, so the kids might be living there, but I didn't, I don't have those numbers, that's, I don't know where their kids might, where they might be losing kids. But that's a possibility too.
Thank you. Any other questions? Fascinating. Need to spend some more time with it. Very good.
Like I said, if you have questions later on, uh, pass them to Anna, she can pass them directly to me or through Lori. And um I'm glad to take a look, see you at it. I don't think I made mistakes in math, but there's a lot of assumptions here, and every assumption can be challenged and say, well, maybe there's something else that's gonna happen that that's that's different than that. Um, or there's just something that's not clear, I didn't state it properly or clearly enough, and you have a question, fire away. I'll gladly respond.
Very good, thank you, John.
All right, I will stop sharing. And do you need me for anything else? And do you need me for anything else?
Well, Wes, you wanna stick around to hear about the chiller and the science floor and policy? No, thank you.
I think I'd rather join Anna and go to Teddy Roosevelt's National Park, it's a great place to camp.
I don't blame you, all right, thank you. Move on then, and I I think we'll have some further discussion at this at an at our upcoming retreat. Very, very interesting information, moral of the story is. Well, I I kinda have one, but nobody is fine along. Okay, great, um next is the chiller update, who's carrying that item?
So, yeah, I can start it, I'm gonna need help from Greg and I think um Lori is still on here too, so she might have something to add, so. As you know, the chiller, we were having difficulties with the chiller right before graduation. And um maybe we we kinda talked about this, so they got the chiller fixed. Um and it was running really well, in fact, Dave and Reed said it was probably running the best that it's ran in a long time. And then there were some problems and I think we, you you know about that, we talked about that at the last board meeting, so here's where we at, we have gotten quotes. For a new chiller. I mean, I sent this in the update to you guys, but the new chiller is approximately a hundred and eleven thousand is what the quote is. And Shannon and I both have those, so if you wanna look at those, you can look at those. We also have a um quote for a brand new chiller, a chiller that they have available, and I don't know if it's the perfect fit for us or not. But they do have it available, so they wouldn't have to send that out, and that chiller is four hundred and sixty thousand dollars approximately. Um I talked to Lori and team from ICS after all of this took place, because obviously we're in the midst of their assessments and Lori asked. Um if we could just would be willing to hold off and wait, you know, since there's not school right now, and then let them have a chance to look at what we have. And um give their recommendations for that, so they were gonna fast track. That piece of their assessment so that they can kinda help us out on that. And then I know Dave has been in contact with Bob German, Bob German has been in contact with me, so we've been getting feedback from Bob German and he's asking us. Also if we can wait, he's out of the country, he'll come in and he'll help us, I just know out of the goodness of his heart, he'll help us. Thank goodness for relationships, right? Uh that he will come and help us and give us some of his feedback because he obviously has worked on all of our systems, he knows how they function. Separately together, um he knows the chiller, he knows our entire heating system, our HVAC, and he has some thoughts. On the options that were given to us um by Dyken, but maybe I'll let um Dave. Give you some more of the technical stuff, because I think he's there, right?
Oh, yes, he is, I might give him over in front of camera, but yeah, so Anna, you mentioned, I think you first said. A new chiller would be a hundred and eleven thousand, I think that's the re the rebuilt.
Yes, yes, the rebuild of if just that part, right? So if that part doesn't function well, there's still all the other parts and there really isn't a guarantee. Um so I don't know, the way Bob described it is putting lipstick on and I won't even say what.
And so help us understand the chiller that we're talking about pools. The and only the the high school side and the two gyms? And that's not not the central office, um what about the library, that's sort of a.
That's the central office area, if I'm right, Dave, right?
Yes.
So so without the chiller, we will be without cooling in the two gyms and the entire high school building.
Correct.
Okay. Um so Dave, what do you have to add?
Not too much, I mean until, I guess, I'm kinda waiting to hear what ICS has to come back with and. I would like to visit a little more with some people like Bob German, I hope that he's pretty familiar with our stuff and. Just to get different viewpoints, um and I think. To make a good decision is kinda where I'm at, otherwise I don't think there's much else to add.
Okay, how about Lori, Lori Christensen I see is on with us, um she's unmuted, so can you give us um some perspective? Please?
Yes, yep, so we have been working, um you know, the. The thing is, is like an overall look at your high school HVAC system could really use. Like there's there's more than just a chiller that doesn't work that that the district should be looking at. And so we're we're looking at, okay, what can we do just for the chiller, but also. Something that would set you up well for the future on on replacing. The entire HVAC and the controls in the high school. And we also are looking at your energy, because one of the big things is is how do we pay for it? And and so we have looked at where you're at today as a district on. Just the high school, but also your elementary, your whole building, and and how you you operate and your efficiency of your system. And trying to see if there's some savings by putting in a more efficient system to be able to help you pay for this replacement. Um so we're in the process of that, I don't have like the final. Um I have my guys working last week, they're working hard on getting that information, um we just had a little bit of a delay with. Being able to read some of the utility um information, but we've gotten some of that back now and and so they're working hard. Um but that that's where we're at is helping you guys see there's actually a bigger need than just the chiller. And and what does that look like for you?
So this chiller, if I understand correctly, was put in originally in the early nineteen eighties. Okay, so when the north gym, I think, was added, and so. I don't know what its expected lifespan might have been then, but less than forty years probably, so um. And and then the main heating and well, what's the cooling in the in the elementary school?
Dave, do you want me to answer that or, oh, go ahead, Dave. Oh, okay, so your elementary school has a complete different system. Um it has its own set of boilers that does the heating, and then the cooling is through those mini split units where you have a cassette. There most of them are located above the door to each classroom, so you have a a cassette unit and then an outdoor condensing unit. So it's completely separate and and that's not, you know, the reality is, is that system too. Is in need of replacement and and you could see a lot of efficiencies and um. In operation by having a more centralized system for your entire school district. Um but that that is a separate system than a high school.
And so if if we were to put in any new system, whether it just be the chiller at the high school. Or a system that serves our entire facility, what what would sort of be uh an expected lifespan of a new system that's installed today?
Well, I would say yours your each component has a little bit different life expectancy when you look at it. But like your chiller and boilers, I mean, you're gonna get thirty, thirty plus years on. On that would be what the listed life expectancy is. Um as you can see, the the units that you guys have, they do last longer, you can fix them. Um but that would be what Ashray has as a listed life expectancy.
So what is our timing of gathering information and the needing to come together again? To make a a decision?
I'm I what my thinking from our timeline, I would hope that, I I mean, I know this is gonna make you cringe, but we might need to get together that week of July fourth. I'm hoping that we'll have that information if not before uh to make that decision, I know. This is a huge decision for us and for you guys, because we don't have the money to pay for this, you know, um we have, well, if you looked at our budget. We're planning on spending our entire bu- uh budget for our building fund, um we're going to be in the red, we still have several years to pay off bonds. So we don't have the money in the building fund, so we're having to dip into our general fund, and our general fund is supposed to be used for education, not our building, so you know. I mean, and I know that you know this as a board, but these are some huge decisions that we're gonna have to make. Moving forward, um but so I think that we have to, I realize it's gonna be the Fourth of July week, we can do a Zoom or we can figure something out. And we might not have that information, but like I think Dave and I are in the same agreement, I gotta hear from Bob, I'm hearing from Lori, you know. Bob has no skin in the game, he's not a salesman, he's not, you know, he's just here to help us and it's just because he cares about our community. And he's, like I said, he's gonna be back on Thursday, so then that'll give Dave and I a chance to meet with him, talk to Lori, kinda put some things together and. Um I would think, let's see, what we what's today, the nineteenth, twenty-sixth, maybe we can do it the week before the Fourth of July.
Okay, so now that's giving me a little bit of a logistical uh question with regard to um. Brian Sayer not already having been seated on the board, Robert, um so we're going to, we're we will want to. I don't think we can seat Brian until July and we have to have a, is it a regular meeting or we we need to do some research on that? So we make sure we have five board members um in place, I mean, I know we can act on it with a quorum, but I wanna have five board members. To have them in a decision like this.
I agree in having and Brian is learning our facilities and he's got obviously experience in the HVAC, so I think that that's an important piece also, so. I don't know if a decision will have to be made until that July twentieth or um and Lori might be able to help out more, Dave, anybody chime in here, but I think. Back to you guys are gonna have to mull it over in your minds and we're gonna have to be thinking, what are we going to do, how are we gonna pay for this, what are, you know, so forth.
Okay, so so kind of some steps that I see Bob returns next week. And or this week, whenever Bob returns, and then we have a, maybe we have facilities committee meetings or or working groups, task forces. Gathering information, information to be shared out to the board, so we have it in front of us, but. We will will need as much information as we can shared and and then you're leaving the seventh. All right, we might have a little sliver of a window on like the sixth of July between one and two o'clock or something. But we need to have good information.
Right, hopefully the facilities committee, that will be who our meeting group will be, um and and we'll figure and Brian, we'll include Brian in on that too.
And Robert, and that is, and the board members are Robert and Monica and Robert, if you could just bear with us a little longer and stick with us to help. You know, gather that information and put your two cents in, well, maybe kind of have six board members that get to not make the final decision. But at least have input for all stakeholders here. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, we'll move on then to the science floor.
So we have had no further change orders unless something happened over the weekend, but I don't think so, they seem to be working steadily, I think we have less people on the job, Dave can correct me, but. Uh they, are they there already this morning, probably not, I think they have travel on Mondays. Is Dave still there?
And you're right, they're traveling on Mondays, they've been working four tens, but seems to be going along pretty smoothly, I think and they might be a little ahead of schedule. It could be great, but yeah, it's been pretty quiet.
Great news, all right, any questions about the science floor?
Uh Robert says he has to leave, if there's anything there's need.
No, I I guess if you need to go, Robert, thank you, but please be alert to communication and the facilities committee meetings that. So you can continue to help us on this on these important decisions.
Okay, yeah, I was trying to say something earlier, I had my thing muted, what is? What we gotta look into the the terms, what is, is there a set date then on, I know it's the meeting, but. If you move the meetings or what, how does that, we need to find out some more information on that.
I think I I'll leave that to uh Shannon and Anna to work that out. Um you know, we've done things in the past a little differently than other boards have, and I don't think there's anything wrong with the way we handled it. And but we've talked about moving to um so our June meeting would be the last meeting of. This board of the old board and but we didn't anticipate having such an important and significant decision. In the works um during that transition time and uh we, I I don't think we can seat a new board member before July. So we may have, and and I don't know if we can call a special meeting to seat a new board member, so I'll leave that. To Shannon and Anna to research and share out with us, so we can have the best um possible information. Thank you, have a good day. All right, so we're moving on then, nothing else for committee meetings and reports, uh facilities was all we had. So we're moving on to policy, we are on page. Eighty-eight of our package, no, eighty-seven of our packet, so these are both. Second readings for final approval?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Is it advised that we act upon them separately? Or can we do them in a single?
One of it, one of them is an amendment and one of them is an adoption, so.
Okay, so uh let's act on. DGGA um. Professional learning plan, which was just changing uh the language um. Professional development to professional learning, I believe.
Yes, yes.
I'm seeking a motion uh which Anna has put in her guidance to us to amend policy DGGA. And um on second reading and that it become the final policy, the official policy of the districts. Uh Nagel moves to approve, to amend policy DGGA as presented on second reading and that it become the official policy of the district. Is there a second? Day seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion during none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, anyone opposed, say no, motion passes. And then we'll move on to DDAF certified leave, just as a reminder, uh we. Just added the language related to emergency leave to um coincide with the our negotiated agreement terms. Um seeking a motion to adopt this policy as presented on second reading and that it become the official policy of the district. Day moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Nagel seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. I'll vote yes as well, sorry, I forgot to speak up, um motion passes. All right, that concludes the section on policy, so let's move on to canvassing the election. We didn't have any minor faculty, nothing.
I have the results, but I had, according to my school board thing, I was supposed to keep them under. Safe, fireproof safe, so I didn't know what I was supposed to send. So I didn't send anything in it, okay. So according to this, I'm supposed to let you know, there were fifty-nine ballots passed. Um fifty-three were voted for Sheila Nagel, fifty-two were voted for Brian Sayer. Um Bob Miller received one vote, Kyle Gerner received one vote, John Bocke received one vote. Tony Fatacic received one vote, Robert Thorpe received one vote and Nikki Canola received one vote. Um I have. There were. One, two, three, four, five. Absentee ballots requested, um they were all requested in person and they were all returned to me. Um in person, so I they uh they were. Uh the canvassing judge and clerks reviewed the applications and the envelopes. And there were no discrepancies noted, so the um that secrecy ballots were removed from the envelopes. The judges re- return uh removed the ballots and put them in the. Um ballot box. And they were then counted with the rest of the regular votes, so and there has been nothing received as of today. Or through Friday, we have got today's mail, but. Yeah, and nobody, nobody asked for, I never mailed out any absentee ballots, so that absentee ballots I gave out were returned.
Okay. So, do you know what, what is the language we need here to prove the results of the election and?
Okay. And there were no ballots, the, the judges did not find any ballots that they rejected, they were all um included. It says, once the appropriate determinations are made by the school board, the board should confirm, confirm the vote totals for each contest, did you guys? How did up, tallied up the votes previously?
I, I think we just take, accept the.
Okay.
I mean, except for, unless there was another, were more ballots that we had to come, wouldn't there are not, so I think maybe the report that you have from, signed by the election officials, we would just approve that and declare um Sheila Nagel and Brian Sayer elected.
Okay.
Do we elected, does that sound?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Can you see that? So um the election, the official returns were signed by our election board, Carol Wohl, Kay Branda Gamer and Barb Boyle declaring um and showing Sheila Nagel with fifty-three votes and Brian Sayer with fifty-two votes, um and that Sheila Nagel and Brian Sayer had received the highest number of votes and I suggest that I would entertain a motion that the board uh accept the reports of the election board and declare Sheila Nagel and Brian Sayer elected for three-year terms. We'll make, Dave moves to approve the. I guess I'll second, I'll second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes. And uh declare Sheila Nagel and Brian Sayer elected. And we'll have to figure out how to seat the board.
Further action, seated. And then I have, uh at the end of the meeting, Brian and Sheila, I have some forms for you, please, to fill out.
Okay, preliminary twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budgets. I think we were struggling to get that um shared.
Oh, yeah. So, oh, I can't. So Anna and I did a little work on this. Um so there's the general fund, we have specials, special fund, we have building fund, hot lunch, and activities. So in, to familiarize ourselves, um we kind of started with the smaller funds, so we can familiar, I can familiarize myself. So this is the actual budget that Tom had. Um, the spreadsheet that Tom sent out. Um how come I can't?
Scroll.
Yep, I'm trying.
There you go.
So I'll go down to the special reserve. Um, we ended, so the beginning of last year, um or on July one of twenty-two, we had, or June thirtieth of twenty-two, you had um transferred half of the special reserve into the general funds, we started at a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So far to date, um for this year, we've received sixty-eight thousand dollars. Sixty-eight thousand dollars in income, in special reserve income. So our special reserve budget right now is a hundred and eighty-three dollars. And I haven't done anything with that. I'm assuming we were gonna take, take half of that out, but I.
Oh. We're going to, okay, so I'll give you, I'll give you history on this fund. The, the number that it has been since twenty eighteen, nineteen is almost exactly what it's been the entire eleven years I've, well, no, eleven years I've been on the board. Um we can, we can tax for that, but we never have until just this current school year. And uh we've never, so no, I, I think a tiny amount went in one year. Maybe some interest or something back before what you have on here, but essentially this is what it's been all the last ten years. So we, any given year, we can move up to fifty percent of it out.
Yes.
Which last year was the first time we did in response to the need for to pay the, for the the sewer repairs. And of course, that wasn't enough to do so, but that was a source of funds we have. In response to that, then we elected to tax, which was, I think we can tax up to three mils.
Correct.
Which we taxed as much as we could and that generated the sixty-eight thousand dollars. So there you can see how we went from twenty nine, nine fifty-one down and then back up a bit with our taxation. So we can move um fifty percent of that or ninety-one dollars. And if, if we were going to do that, we would really need to do that today, would we not? Unless we have another meeting.
No, we would have to, I would have to do it by I can make the journal entry for June thirtieth. Cause I think, because I, yeah, we, I think we made the motion last year in July to move the.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then by the next time we meet, we may have a better idea where we are with general fund, I, I it's certainly likely we will want to move fifty percent as much as we can over to the general.
So. I'm sorry, Si, that is what I'm going to suggest, is that you move that halfway over, because remember, we still um need to get the money to pay for the rest of the science room floor.
Okay.
Yep. So then I, Anna and I had been in discussion and, and if with my classes with Paul Stremmick and Anna's conversations with other superintendents, um we can levy up to twelve mils on the miscellaneous funds. Um, and that miscellaneous fund goes straight into the general fund, um if you so choose. So we took this, um this is what we would estimate at, we took the current value of uh property value, because we just, that's what we have. So at twelve mils, that's what that would generate at the end of, um so then we would, could transfer this into the general fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, so that was um that was, uh we, we put that in there for this year, so that you can see that.
And this is not something that we would, could do be before twenty twenty-three, like the special reserve, we're talking about doing that sort of retroactively um to make that transfer, but we, this uh levying the miscellaneous mills, that will be something that we decide when we certify our mill levy and uh well, first we through our budget and by August twelfth, there's something, and then the final approval in October to certify our levy. Okay, so that's something we're, we're looking forward um likely that that's a source of funds that we can tap into, and it is increasing taxes, which we've never, we've never ever in my time on the board assessed uh miscellaneous levy.
It's not even, no, there, we don't even have a miscellaneous fund anywhere in counting or bookkeeping or.
But you said it goes directly into the general.
No, it goes into the miscellaneous fund, but we can transfer a hundred percent of it into the general fund. We aren't limited to uh fifty percent like the um special reserve fund is.
And that would take a motion from the board to transfer that as well, or is that so?
Probably. And we would transfer it into the general fund and then we transfer it, I've been in, told that it's best to put it into the general fund and then it's a building fund if you need it, because of course, once it goes into the building fund, it has to use the building fund first. Um, so again, this is, um, this is the building fund. So this is the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget that was approved. So we started, um, we have received four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, we received the ten thousand dollars from the track or from the, I believe, Starion Bank for the track donation. Um, this is what was projected last year, we were to start our, our um the projection was um to end in building fund in the negative. Of course, we started in the negative of two hundred and seven thousand dollars also. Um, our, our
where's? Did we move the special reserve or?
No, we moved the special reserve into the general fund because all the bills have been paid for the sewer were paid through the general. So um this number, um, let me see if I can. So how do I unshare my own screen, Greg? Sorry. This is your screen, I want to get to my screen. There we go. So from this number here, um we estimated that we would have a budget, um this is building fund, so we did a full twenty mils on this. Um, and then another ten thousand dollars starting, I believe starting has another three years um to donate that um transfers from the general fund.
So that would be the fifty percent.
That would be, yeah, I think yep, the special, and I think I took, that also includes the um miscellaneous numbers, yep. Transfers from, here's the transfers from the miscellaneous, um oh. Not sure.
Yeah, so the transfer from miscellaneous is right there.
Oh, I know what this is. I believe the five hundred and fifty-four thousand, that's the Esser funds.
Oh, sure.
That we were gonna move in there.
And doesn't also, that, but that's only Esser funds, but so aren't we, you're not projecting to move fifty percent? No, the fifty percent of the special is going back into twenty twenty-three, it's not.
The fifty percent of the specials is, I haven't moved anything from this, from the specials.
We're anticipating doing so, but you did.
I have that right, yes, yes, yep. This, so this would have another ninety, ninety thousand dollars on it. And then we have uh contracted services at fifty thousand dollars. Um, the projects of one point two million dollars was, um we took, um what, uh we took four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so again, this is it's, it's just impossible to know, because I took for four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a new chiller. At the time we were doing this, we didn't, hadn't even started thinking school why, we just said, oh, we have to replace the chiller. So this number probably isn't even who, I just, I don't know. It includes what we owe yet on the science floor and the four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so.
This is starting.
Yep. And then the eleven forty-two, seven four twenty for the interest and the principal on the current bonds of twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen bonds that we have. We only have the one year left of the twenty fourteen, we have three years left of the twenty fifteen bond.
So it seems to me like this year then or this next year, said one year, is two hundred thousand dollars of bond payments, but then the following two years is only about a hundred thousand each of those.
Yes, yes, it drops down, yep. Yep, and I working two computers really. Bond repayment, there it is. So yes, um, this year it's about two hundred and eleven thousand dollars and then the next two years, it's a hundred and sixteen thousand and a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, so we free up about a hundred thousand dollars in there.
Yeah, good start.
Yeah, and then I have hot lunch, which again, we um we uh twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. So we oh yes, we started the fund at the beginning of the year at six thousand dollars. Um, this is, this was the projection for this year, which gives us a negative forty-six thousand. So I have the negative forty-six thousand came up here to the twenty twenty-three. Um, I have to so that's not right, because I have, we have to start out at zero, so we'd have, I'd have to put in a transfer from general fund to clear that out, so this starts at a zero up here. Um, I took in, these numbers should be the income. I used, the, I have a total number of children's sales or children meals and adult meals. And at the same dollar amount without raising fees, this is approximately what we should come in on at. Uh, we talked about raising the fees at the last, this is the last meeting, um so those, you know, if we're gonna move those up, this hopefully would go up.
So, but you're twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, that's just the budget, that's not the actual numbers, is it?
Correct, yes. I, I didn't know, I mean, I don't know how, how it goes down previously, I don't have the actual, I mean, hot lunch, I probably could come up pretty close, because I shouldn't be paying any other bills for hot lunch. Um uh yeah. So then when I, when I can finally get this done, this number here, this will be the actual numbers. Which I don't think this is, I think it's a little closer to, uh, I remember right, it was a little higher up in the negative. Because, well, and then you, um, our adult lunch was off, I know that was off by, cause I think that ten thousand dollars is pretty close to what we did this year at three dollars and seventy-five cents for an adult meal, so hopefully that could go up, but. And then the activity fund, I haven't, we're still paying and, and I haven't done anything with that other than to know that I just kind of copied what Tom had done last year.
Okay, and the timing of this, again, it seems like August twelfth sticks in my mind that we have to have the preliminary budget approved.
Right.
And so that we can submit it to the county and then they generate, they add that to the all the other jurisdictions and they send out, they send out the county, the partial real estate tax estimates. And then we have to, um, we have our hearing and then if anybody wants to come in and complain or um, and then once that is done, we move ahead to early October, sometime in early October, that we have to certify our final budget.
Right.
Which we can, we can continue to amend if we need to, but we have, that's what we submit to the county that goes on the official property tax statements or then they certify. Okay?
So the sage advice that I got from a longstanding superintendent is to ask you to approve this preliminary budget, so it gives Shannon and I a working budget for July, and then we can continue to amend it.
Okay. If that's what you need from us, then that's what the three of us will take care of today.
Nobody to argue with you.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the preliminary working budget, which has been presented to us? been presented to us? We'll make that motion. Nagel makes that motion, is there a second?
I will second.
Jay seconds. Is there any discussion? I would just say thank you to Anna and Shannon for keeping this process moving. I think you're, you know, it's a big, big job and I know there's so many moving parts and lots to do, but we'll get there, we will. Is there any other discussion?
It, Shannon's been doing a lot of work.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes. Consolidated application approval, can you give us a high level view of exactly what this is?
Sure, so all of our federal dollars that we get, so including Title I, Title II, we move actually Title II and Title IV, which are earmarked for professional development, safety, you know, a lot of the extra things that we're able to do. We could put those two together and we transfer two and four to five. But anyways, those are our federal dollars, our federal monies. And so what we have to do is we have to do a preliminary application, which I already did, that was approved. And then I have to do the full plan of how we're going to spend our title dollars and give our assessments, you know, all the different pieces. It's a pretty, I don't know if it's rigorous, it's just kind of long and involved. So that's what this application is, is it saying to the state, here's what we're going to use our dollars for, here's our assessment, here's how we know that's what we need our dollars for. And I built this off of Greg and Tara did their plan and then I used their assessment. So it's taken in all the pieces just so that they know that we're using our federal dollars correctly. And so you just need to approve this, I will submit to the, to the state. And then the next step will be Shannon and I will work on the budget to, for our title dollars.
All right. Is there? Is there a motion to approve the consolidated application as presented?
I will make a motion.
Dave moves to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes. Next, we have contract approval, action required, please update us on what has transpired.
So we offered a second grade position to the young lady that is on the contract that you will be signing. She, I believe she got her, yeah, she got her teaching license or anyway, she signed her contract and we just need you guys to approve that contract.
Is, is, is it okay if we say the name?
I believe so, yeah, yeah.
All right, so I'm seeking a motion to approve the contract which has been issued to Jess, Jessalyn Langemo.
I think it's Langemo, is it?
Jessalyn Langemo, is there a motion to approve this contract? I will make that motion. Nagel moves to approve, is there a second? Jay seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes. Thank you for applying and joining us, looking forward to good work in that department. So what's the staffing update then?
I believe that this is current and correct and Greg and Jordan, you can speak up if I've got it wrong, but we're still looking, you can see the spots that we've got. So we are still looking for an English teacher, no apps, yeah, right, Jordan?
Nothing, no.
So Jordan and Brandon kind of had a preliminary plan of what we can do in order to cover that. It's not our favorite, but it's, it's might be our reality. In the district, you can see the jobs that we've got open, same thing with, we didn't get any applications or anybody that, Dave, we didn't get any applications for the route bus driver and the things that Dave and I were looking at, or we felt what was best. So Dave, I told you, he already agreed to move over to that position. So now we're advertising for custodian. I think there's been a couple bites on that, so hopefully we'll find somebody to do that. Again, we're looking for route bus drivers, activity bus drivers, and just to put the plea out there that if we don't get route bus drivers and activity bus drivers, that means cutting of routes, that means cutting of travel to activities. So it'll fall on parents to provide that, so we need bus drivers. High school, special ed, you can see, we still need a high school teacher, Tracy, and there now, I mean, the specialized unit is working super hard in order to find somebody. And we have six paraprofessionals because we just had somebody that resigned. And that's six full-time pairs that we need for special ed students. So Greg and Jordan are going to be forced to make some tough decisions as far as programming responsibilities, you know, the things that we had planned, like we wanted to be able to do PLCs, that those are going to be affected by the lack of people. So I put a plea out to our people on our staff, saying if you know of anybody that would fill these positions, this is, I mean, we're in crisis mode if we don't find these paraprofessionals.
Anna, what's a PLC?
Personal learning or professional learning group, so we have a needs plan for our teachers. Go ahead, Greg.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's a time for our teachers to meet.
How will the lack of paras impact that time? You'll have to ask.
So, so the, the real problem here is that these are specialized parents that, that we're missing, right? So they cover specialized minutes that we are legally bound to cover in. And individual education for, you know, plans, I, these are, are the legally binding documents that we have to follow. So if it says a kid needs 200 minutes a week, we have to cover those 200 minutes a week. Right now, we're, you know, in the past, we've been able to cover them when specialized paras, now it would have to be probably a certified teacher. Where that certified teacher could be doing a DLC with their first, their other first grade teacher, but now we can't do those, that certified teacher's got to be covering those 200 minutes or, you know, that, that's. That's an overview, but that's essentially what we're talking about. We've been able to staff our playground with district paras in the past. I, you know, those district pairs will have to cover special ed minutes. We were doing a lot of that last year, where our district pairs were covering. Special ed minutes and stuff like that too. So we're, a lot of ideas being thrown around, but we do, we, we really need people to help us. Yeah, that, that's kind of how it would, we circled out of that.
Now what we want?
No. And. Okay, that's, that's it for that piece of it. So if you know of anybody, throw the word out there, will you?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments about staffing? If not, there are two items for future agenda. I'll be looking, we have the 23, 24 fee schedule, three of the ICS presentation, which is what?
The facilities assessment, so that's what the engineers came in, that's going to be that need of like, okay, here's your systems and what you need to look to in the future.
And then evaluation models for superintendent and business manager, that's something we've been, yes, kind of in our minds for quite a few months. Okay, so then future meetings, we have, our regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 20th, but it's evident that we're going to have to meet. Before that, they're in person or hybrid, I guess, for some pretty deep discussions. And we don't know that yet. But we're in, but Anna leaves on July 7. So it's kind of the window between Bob returning and Anna leaving, is that right?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah, yeah. But you know, Dave, those guys, if something happens and I'm gone. Dave, Shannon, I, they, they've got all the pieces too, so.
Okay, so we're anticipating a special meeting sometime between like Wednesday, the 28th and. I don't know, the, something like maybe Wednesday, the 12th, that's a two-week window.
Sure. Yeah.
Hopefully sooner than that, but. Not, not the fourth or the third probably.
The morning of the fourth. No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Okay, and then we would be able to have Lori join us from ICS or.
Oh, yes.
Yes. And you, you know what? Are, are we anticipating the possibility of considering? A bond issue? And that, that's a whole legal process that I've never been involved in and I know it will take time, but ICS can guide us if, if that is a decision that we make and they can guide us through all of the legal steps and.
They will work that through us, that would be their tier two, so of course, it would be more funds for us, but I think in the long run, they probably would save us money just simply because they know the ins and the outs and the here and there. And they would, they would take their analyzing and just carry it forward. So it's just a continuation of the whole process, but they will do everything for us with that bonding piece.
Well, that's a relief, yeah. And I don't want it said that that's what we're doing.
Right.
But it's certainly something we need to prepare ourselves for considering because our, our building fund only generates what, 65, 70,000 dollars a year? Well, that's fairly enough to put Band-Aids on our 160-year-old buildings. And you know, it's, it's time for some major surgery here, probably well past time. And so. When I look back at comparing our mill levies with other districts of our size around the state, we are, we are among the lower mill levies and I'm not, our goal isn't to raise taxes, but our goal has to be to take care of our facilities. And if we need to take on additional debt as we wind down the last debt that we have taken on, then we need to do that. It's, it's under consideration and it's not a done deal, but it's likely we will be learning more about that. Okay, anything else? With that, I was going to thank Robert for his service and I'm glad, but he's not in the meeting anymore and he's not excused from service, just, yeah, we may, we may get medium, but we'll be looking for communication from Anna and Shannon on that process by which we can still do, do business with a full board. Depending on the timing and, and how we get Brian seated on the board, we'll be anticipating facilities committee meeting and we'll be anticipating more information coming out as it's gathered with regard to the HVAC systems and so on.
Yep, I, and I'll keep you informed from out here and, and so I'm, any, if you need me, I can text, call, whatever.
Okay. With that, there's no further business on the agenda, so I'll declare the meeting adjourned at 8:43. Thank you all for joining us and have a great day.
Thanks.